All right, it's four o'clock. Their vows has come meeting to order and anybody, any public comment? Any of you people from the general public want to say anything? That's the record show there are no members. Number three, discussion of possible action on say 2019 Board of Commissioners objectives. And I believe you were overwhelmingly.
Tasked.
Tasked. To being in charge of this, Miss Tash.
Which is, which is fine.
The floor is yours, ma'am.
We all agreed last night that, you know, we can come with our objectives, we can categorize them, we can consolidate, and then do just like we did last year on what were then only budget objectives. And we'll, you know, we'll rate them, must have, should have, nice to have, not important, sum them up and list them by total. I think we can get as far as we can today, if we only get, you know, down to we consolidate and have some discussion and go into the actual miracle building, you know, we can either take it away with us and then forward our opinions all to Heather to add up, or we can say we get together again. But it'd be good if we can get through to where, you know, we had a chance to consolidate and discuss.
Floor is yours, ma'am.
I'm already changing one of my main objectives, which is going to be to finalize the trash program items so that we can try to have a rollout, you know, starting this year, but if the situation is that our trash day is going to change from Tuesday to Thursday, I think we're kind of back to the beginning. Tuesday, maybe Thursday, Saturday? So, at the moment, on the assumption that what we're nearing from waste industries is, is going to happen, I think we all have to reconsider putting trash back on the list as a sort of begin here. Just so everybody can now do their objectives and put them on the list.
And that's, that's effective March fourth, David? Yep.
We're not going to have a really good start because there's no way we can talk about.
I'm just getting a chair.
Imagine how I feel. So, okay, if everybody is ready then, just go and staff, commissioners, anybody who is prepared, put your sticky notes on the proper piece of paper. If some of them you think could be one or the other, just put them where you think they best belong, we will consolidate it and figure it out. Okay?
Next step.
The next step now is we have five different, we have five, five categories, and what we need to do is, there's five of us, everybody grab one, take a look, if there's like different ones that are duplicates, just sort of, you know, fan them together and make a list of what is in the category. So there's advocacy, you know, there's, each page has a bunch of sticky notes on it.
Set it from Monday.
Everybody has a copy. It is twenty minutes to five. We can start with discussion as needed, so that if there are any questions about what different things are, or if people think, does that really belong in that category? If we can get through the discussion, so everybody understands what this is, before Joe has to go a quarter after five, we can then at least the next time we meet, we can be ready to score them. Or again, there is the option of everybody take a moment, score them, and send them to Heather, and Heather can total them.
I like that.
Okay? I don't think we have to sit together in a room and score them, we're all going to sit silent and score.
This is the one page, right?
These, these are all the, these are each.
Let's make sure we all scored in the same effort.
Correct. And that goes, that goes back to how we did it last year, we did it just for budget. And it, oh, thank you. It was, you get three points for what you term is must have, two points for should have, one point for nice to have, and don't give any points to something that you think is not important. And that is actually included in the packet for this meeting. It's, it's on the description page of the process we're going to follow.
Okay.
Heather's, the email I sent to Heather.
Oh, okay.
Okay? And again, we did this last year for the budget priority meeting, so, you know, usually the problem comes down to is it a should have or nice to have, not a, it's clear what is a must have usually. Yeah, no, I think right now the biggest thing is to go through this and, and just go through it page by page on every one of them, and people who have questions about what's meant by that, now's the time to ask it, it's not clear to me, because I know, I know there were a couple that I wrote on, you know, the one I was responsible for that I kind of went, I'm not quite sure what this means specifically, but now's the time to do it, and if we can get through that, so everybody understands each of these, then we can go away and do our scoring. Is that okay? Okay, if we just start then with policies and procedures, resolutions, the things that people stuck on this page, road repairs and running with advocates, priority was specified. I, I, I would think road repair for our main road, but that's a DOT situation. Everybody clear on that? Okay? Cross train the finance staff. Are there any questions about that? Town staff can ask questions to them.
I'll ask a question on that. Are we talking about training them as water and sewer operators, or what?
No, within, within the three functions. If they could, if one got sick, the other could fill in for them, so they know their job, they know each other's jobs.
Better communication among elected officials.
Illegal.
I, 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 I think I understand the purpose, but how it's done to me is, is unclear. Other than more discussion in our public sessions, more open debate, more explanations. I'm going to assume that's what it's about, it's let's take the time to talk more at our meetings and not leave, not leave things kind of in a mystery mode.
Why don't we ask the person?
Okay, the person.
I wrote it, and I'll tell you exactly what it is.
That's exactly what it is?
I will tell you exactly.
Oh, okay.
Exactly what I mean is, and just being blunt, I think I've had, I don't remember a phone call from Peter, I don't remember an email from Peter since the election. I've had, she calls from you, John, I've talked a couple times, Mike, dozen times maybe, Joe, half a dozen times. And as your mayor, it's always interesting, I just don't know what the hell's going on, I just tell you the way it is. And it's not by happenstance, it's by design. I mean, it's just laid in on the table. You know, I come to the meetings, most of the decisions are already made before we get here, and a lot of times I have no clue. And yet, just like, just like the trash saying going through right now, the time consumption and the emails I've gotten with people just out of control with anger, you know, and yet, you know, I just feel like I'm the whipping post. I mean, I know you guys here a little bit, but I'm the whipping post from everybody. And it's just, you know, it's just frustrating for me. I've nev, you know, in basically twenty years of being elected official in town, the whole of it, I've never been elected by a government, I just don't know what's going on. And you people are elected by the people, if that's the way you want it, and that's the way you guys want it, that's fine, but I'm going to tell you, if I explode one night in this meeting, in this room, don't be surprised. You know, I sit here and I look at some people in the audience, they call me out, chew me out for thirty and forty-five minutes in an hour, and then they come here and stare me down in the meetings, and, you know, and I basically have nothing to say, I don't know, pass the gavel, and I don't have any input from you guys, so I don't know what's on your mind, I just know what you vote. And it's just very frustrating, and I'm just simply saying, it's nice, once in a while, to have some kind of communication or warning of what some of the stuff coming is, and that's all I'm going to say about it.
Do you have any ideas or suggestions? I mean, for some of us, for some of us as elected officials, I mean, I've always had a management team, I've always been able to communicate with a management team, and that, but in the public environment, we can't do that.
Well, let me ask you a question. How many times do you, sir, talk with John, sir, or Peter, sir, in a week about anything about the town?
I talk to them more than I talk to you.
And that was a good way to not answer the question, but my point's made. You got time to talk to them, but you don't have time to talk to me.
Well, actually, Joe and I talk once a week.
Yeah?
Maybe ever.
We don't communicate.
Joe ever communicate?
I didn't say, I said not once a week.
I think I spoke to John once last month.
Would you, would you agree with me that you guys talk more than you talk to me?
Yes, sir.
Communicate with me in any way?
Yeah.
That's my whole point. And yet, I'm the guy, whoever's mayor is, is supposed to have a, a large understanding of what's going on in the town, and the thinking of the board. You know, and when they use me, they call me and ask me this and that, and it's just like, one of the emails I got this week, in regards to the trash, the person that sent me the email, I think I still got it at the office, said that, that I was in support and communicating, pushing this trash thing into the way it is, you know? And the reason they feel that way is because they had talked with one of our commissioners. I sent an email back yesterday or today and said, would you please identify that person? I told you that, so I'm waiting to get an answer. And that's just an example, I'm just simply asking to please include me in what the heck is going on, that's all.
That's fair.
Okay. I think the add-on to that is keep the mayor in the loop. Number four, had a couple on the next lift station project, I think that's clear. Five Ocean Boulevard water retention issues.
That's clear.
I, I think it's clear what, what's wanted, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Then there's the use pre and post beach sand daily east central reach west sections to, I think it said conclude a crisis point. To include?
I would guess, I don't conclude. Yeah. I can't help it, you can't read my life.
Oh, well, okay, this is an example, to include a crisis point.
Right, right. Kind of like that red, red flag that we mentioned in one, one meeting, throwing up the red flag, when is that point?
Okay.
We hope not to get there.
Yeah, you mentioned it last night, okay.
Thank you.
The community rating system score.
You talking about far?
No.
The flood.
The flood.
Flood.
The flood.
Six.
Okay. Update communication plan and website. Is that emergency communication or just general communication?
That's me, yeah, general.
Just general, okay.
No, I think emergency would do a good job.
Okay, I thought it was, yeah, general communication plan and website.
I'm going, I'm going to ask what communication plan, because we have no document that is titled communication plan.
Yeah, so hence the problem.
You want, you want a general?
Oh, you think, you know, normal businesses have a communication plan with a.
So this is established, not updated.
Okay, well, I thought we had one, but I didn't, I don't know where it's written, so we don't. Because we communicate a lot of different ways, and inconsistently, right? So that's, you know, sometimes we do, you know, the water bill, sometimes we do the email, sometimes, you know, so.
So it's establish.
I, I thought we had one, but we don't.
General communication plan policy or policy?
It's usually communication plan.
Okay. So it's establish a general communication. And you mean website update?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that was, this year it was going to be part of it, I think, but it's, it wasn't that it was going to be done in the calendar year. Get more general public involvement, I think that's great, I'm, I'm not quite sure how to do it, but it's certainly a great resolution. Consider the art community aspects in town plans, policies and practices, maybe a workshop linked to the LVP as it progresses. It's something we've mentioned in a couple meetings that should be done. Create policies and practices for advisory board committee appointments and training. Create policy for VOC and advisory board member attendance, participation, and reporting at outside meetings when they're a representative of the town. And that should cover things like reimbursement, the official town physicians, and reporting. And create a standard form for Board of Commissioners work requests to town holding beach boards and committees that we can begin to use in the new fiscal year, to put a little bit more structure to things that we pump to the different groups. Everybody clear on policies and procedures and resolutions? Long range planning. Decision on second water tower. Okay, I think that's clear. Beach renourishment, ten million in ten years for cent, for the next central reach. Fully support the inlet beach protection board, this long-term report, and implement strategy. Okay? Organization analysis, physicians, job description, compensation, I'm just going to say we got that last year. We have copies of it.
So we have, I think that's something in twenty, the year 2000.
The, the job descriptions were signed.
A lot to do with, you think all were updated?
No, I didn't, I did see that, but were they, have they changed significant, it's a question.
I think so, I think so, I think in twenty years, jobs have taken all these changes, has jobs changed.
Review fifty-year plan and determine usability and current efforts, I think that's something that was mentioned in the meeting, that we all need to get more aware of what this is to see what we might do with it. A short-term beach renourishment plan. And here we've got the stage two sewer dump, sewer pump, pump station upgrade, which we also had in policies and procedures, so where do we want to put it? Because we don't need to have both places. I think it should be a longer-term plan, rather than a. Yeah? Okay. So take out, we don't want to have doubles here, take out number four in policies, procedures, resolution, just cross it out, we don't need to score it. And then land use plan update.
I think you're going to be on that. Take it out?
No, take out number four in policies and procedures, first page. Yeah, now we're, now we're back to long-range plan.
Oh, okay.
It was just a duplicate, we don't need.
We're doing this policy procedure.
First page.
First.
First page, where we started. Okay, first page. Now, yeah, the next one's, the title of this should be ordinance.
Update ordinance.
The first one is update ordinances, that's kind of general, so I'm, I'm actually going to ask what, what is wanted here, because that's, I mean, is it identifying ordinances that we need work, or?
So that's mine, so just like we did the other day, there's ordinances that are old and outdated that are flat out wrong.
So conflicted with others.
And now are conflicted with others, so there's old ordinances out there that are.
Was planning and zoning going to look at that?
We had talked about it at one time.
I wasn't at planning and zoning.
No, it was this time, it was this time. But yeah, that's, that's all it's.
David, is that, that word codified, what's the word for that, there's a term?
I mean, our ordinance are codified.
About the updating of the codification, or whatever, there's a term for it.
That's really an administrative term that, to, for Heather to, I mean, whenever she.
What's the word, Tim, I can't?
Oh, I don't know, I might raise my hand for another reason. I mean, y'all said for us to speak up.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, the planning board wanted me to pass along that their, one of their top priorities within the next couple years is going to be updating the commercial zoning laws, ordinance for commercial zones. They wanted me to bring that up, and I told them I would bring it forward in the days.
So we're going to add that?
Well, that as a, as a specific, specific example of something that needs to happen, I would shy away from a wholesale functional review, just declaring open season on ordinances because even, you can waste a lot of time on, 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 not, without any direction. That's a good example of a specific hole there. The others is, well, we've got a whole bunch of laws, I mean, you get, I don't know that, those rules are for a reason, and unless, you know, there's a specific issue that staff would have to bring it up, you know, you commissioners would have to tell us, what's a bad one, what do you think is a bad one?
Fair enough, yeah.
So if you spot one.
Yes, I mean, that's a real good example.
We've been, we've been bringing them for years, I mean, when we come across them, we're in there today, when we come across them, we usually bring them back for a texting minute, and y'all've done a couple yourselves, but since I've been here over nine years, we've probably done a ton of that.
I mean, I could make the other argument, why, why hasn't that been updated for years? Why, you know, someone should have, we should have reviewed that a long time ago, or we should have reviewed.
And, and, and some of those, I mean, that specific one, you know, we haven't had any commercial development on the island in twenty years, I mean, you know, it's the practical side of that, too.
They had to change in time, with big houses.
And sometimes those are pressed by circumstances and need, for example, the walkway issue across environmentally sensitive areas, you know, that issue came up, we brought it forward, you know, those are just exemplified, but that would be a.
Enforcement of ordinances. Again, is this a, there are ordinances that we feel there should be some enforcement policies developed that are more formal, and if so, you know, it's, it's specific ordinance by ordinance? I, I think, yeah.
I did. I think in general our ordinances aren't uniformly enforced.
I just, I, we just had a dog discussion.
Yeah.
That it was clear that nobody wanted to change it and nobody wants to enforce it. Okay?
So I, I.
What do you think?
I apologize for that.
No, here, here is no, here it seems to be, nobody wants to try to change the ordinance to try to balance things, but it's clear we are never going to have year-round regular enforcement of that, of that work.
I think I talked to the police about enforcement, so don't say I didn't.
No, no, it's, Jack, you know, I said every day, we, we did agree some stuff, but I'm just saying, I don't, enforcement of ordinances is which ordinances in particular do we want to focus on to develop something that is robust and will give meaningful results? That, I, I mean, because this is kind of law.
And most of it, and, and, so, if I may, I, I agree that the ordinances aren't enforced, really wrong, and there's a reason for that, we have the season, we have manpower shortage, but we could prioritize certain, like parking for instance, right, maybe, and we did have the discussion, and I think hopefully you're right, we raised some issues, but when it was all said and done, we decided not to make any motion or to change anything about the way it's currently done, I was at the door last night.
True, you're not the ordinance, but I, we did talk about there is.
No, that's what I'm saying.
There's a change in the enforcement.
I, I agree, I said you both right there, you spoke about it, but that we did not make a decision, and we did not offer any remedy, or we can't contend with any existence, so I agree with you, and that's, that's the key, we're going to have to talk to the new chief and see where we can get that. I spoke to the attorney last night just to find out if the police could enforce the trash ordinance in some communities, they don't, or some communities, and she said to look into that. So now that trash is on the back burner, but it's like parking people in the light of day on Ocean Boulevard, kind of simple thing, we think the police would be controlling, and we'd see that, and we could put a warning under it, so we can, we can discuss what we specifically hope that the police can help enforce the behavior.
Yeah, yeah, there's a suggestion last night about the random, you know, the police get out of the car, go to an access point, stand there and look, and if there's somebody out there, you can take care of it. You know, and then eventually that visibility, one person's going to talk to another person, and hopefully that'll help to resolve the issue, without, without really coming out strong.
Yeah, and so is it, is it enforcement of ordinances, and it should be prioritization, and then actions to develop enforcement policy is needed? Because that, that is a more focus, okay? So that should be to everybody, enforcement of ordinances, prioritization, and actions to develop enforcement policy is needed.
I want to ask a question relating to the development of a policy for enforcement of, of whichever ordinances that are desired by the board to, to have more attention on them. I don't think that it's the board's role to get into how things are done, it's the board's role to talk about what they want to see, and it's the executive staff that is the one that is, that is responsible for, for responding to, you know, the desires of the boards in terms of the what. You guys do the what, and the staff decides on the best way to do the how.
David, I don't disagree, but just as last night, what we agreed was to try to develop the first sort of push for education enforcement on trash, two of the commissioners were going to sit with staff to kind of get everything, ideas together, that's the kind of thing that I'm saying, actions that would be the commissioners inputting, and yet the staff then ultimately puts it all together, but it, it's sort of like, this is a group that does want to help. So I'm not saying we draw up the policy, but we certainly give our inputs so that the staff has, you know, has our, here's what we're thinking for them to do that final program. Is that clear?
I, I hear what you're saying. I also, I also don't think that it's the right thing for the board to be identifying specific actions, Joe, like you just said, for the cop to go down to the, the walkway and stand on it to, to show, you know, presence, it's that man's responsibility to determine the tactics and techniques to be employed in order to affect what the desired outcome is. Whether it's flying over with an airplane and a banner on the back of it, that, that's for that man to decide, or whatever ordinance it is, whichever department head is the one that's responsible to that. I'm just trying to, to reinforce the policymakers and decision makers. I'm just trying to, to reinforce the policymakers and decision-makers, responsibilities from the executive staff's responsibilities.
Yeah, yeah, same. Again, what I said last night was purely as a suggestion.
Right.
And I think I worded it that, that way as well.
Okay.
Because--
But I see us going down a rabbit hole.
You don't need us to do the job.
I see us going down a rabbit hole.
If, if anything, right, I would turn around and say, okay, we, we have an issue out there. Do you have any? And I was gonna talk to you privately, too, about this. If you have suggestions, don't be afraid, come forward, let us, let us know. Even on the, even on the monthly report, I mean, if there's categories that you wanna eliminate or add and everything else, I mean, you're gonna be in charge. You're, you're the man.
Okay. Trash-related, I think we, we kind of have to back up and figure out where we're going now. So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to back up several steps. That's still gotta be a priority for this year. Control of large homes. Organization analysis. Um, ordinance?
Yeah, where, where would you put that?
Ordinance?
No, it's organization analysis.
That's what I mean, no, it's under ordinance, is what I'm saying. The category is ordinance.
It's, it's out of place.
So I, I don't understand where, if, I, I, if, if the board, if an organizational analysis is something that a commissioner wants, that, that, that--
Where would you put it?
Policy--
Or long-term--
Well, what it seems like to me, that on the, really on the finance and budget sheet, that should really have some personnel issues that are probably, should really be grouped together. So we're talking about an organizational analysis, and then employee training and advancement, that should probably be over there in the finance budget, the, the category of salary compensation. And that, that's, that's personnel, is what that is.
So put it in finance and budget? Even though it's not, it's not--
It's really personnel.
Yeah, it's personnel.
That whole category really is personnel. And as is employee training and retirement down below, that, that should also be grouped up.
Advancement.
Well--
On employee--
Yeah.
On there already on the financial budget.
On the finance and budget.
Yeah.
Those two sections should really be combined in the personnel, I believe.
Okay. So, scratch your pen.
Yeah. And the employee training advancement, that's an ordinance. And committee and volunteer recognition, is that a resolution?
Okay.
Or committee and volunteer recognition event, would that be something we do by resolution, and it really belongs in policies, procedures, resolutions that might be prioritized?
I think it's a great idea to recognize a committee.
Okay, then let's move that one.
We do that.
Yeah?
We do that.
Yeah.
On a annual basis?
We have a luncheon that they're invited to.
Oh, that's right.
It usually falls in the April, March, April timeframe, sometime in the spring. I think we were closer to May this year, but all the board, or all the employees are asked to send something out to their boards, or they get me their names, and then any people that help with, like, um, community events separately, like the Easter egg hunt, are invited.
So we can scratch that?
Yes, it's done.
Right.
Okay. We're on to finance budget. Develop reserve fund for infrastructure. I, I mean, I, I think these are all, these are all self-explanatory, what we wanna do in fund balance. Revisit, update general fund policy, overall financial policy to begin use in the new fiscal year.
Let me, let me ask you a question, Pat. We're, we're going to, after this meeting, we're gonna take this home, we're going to categorize it, and that's gonna be the end of it. Right?
Well, we score it, then it's like last year, it's tallied up, and a list is prepared by total for, here's the highest or lowest. And then that's still, that's still open to discussion, but--
But, well, let me just discuss this thing, because this, this has been something that we've discussed a number of times. Under the fund balance with the ten, and soon as the ten million dollars dedicated to sand over ten years. How did you come up with that number? Where did that number come from? So that, what, I, I have to know if it's feasible, so I can actually give it a proper rating.
That is why, I was the one who actually put revisit and update the general fund policy slash overall financial policy, because at one of the meetings, when we had to say that it's okay for us to put money into the sand reserve fund, even though the general fund has not hit the target, it was mentioned that it might be that we need to go back and revisit exactly how we wrote things, so that it's not a case of we're having to vote to not follow a policy if we wanna put money in a reserve fund. So I, I think all of this, I agree with you, Mike. I think a lot of this has to do with discussing, how did these numbers come up, and are they the right numbers? And that is sort of the overall, revisit the overall financial policy that, that sort of resets everything, is we do this right, or lose the right numbers. But, I mean, that's sort of my explanation of why I put that on there, because I remember the discussions, and it was said, but it's easy enough for us to revisit that, and we probably should.
Yep.
But, Mike, if you were involved with the board at the time they made the decision, it's a out-of-the-air number, not a calculated number, saying, this is a stretch, but if we could do it, the closer we get to that, the stronger we'll be, the less we'll have to borrow, so have it on the front of your mind, that we're always looking to build that fund up as much as we can. No, I don't think anybody on the board had the expectation we'd actually need it, but it was the goal, 'cause you shoot for it, get as close as you can, and always be thinking, don't be wasting money, cause you need to be prepared as much as you can ten years from now. That was the goal.
I agree, we don't wanna waste money.
Yeah, that was the goal. No, but that was the goal. And because we knew, as things go, we were gonna need more money for sand, probably quicker than ten years. You know, that was, that was the, but that was the, and it was just a number that, it wasn't calculated.
Okay.
Um, it is quarter after five, and I know the two of you have to leave. We have not gone through the discussion of all of these that really allows us to do the next step. I would suggest we have another workshop, that'll only have to be probably another hour, hour and a half, to finish this up.
This is something we're gonna do with town next year, right?
This, well, this, remember, this, this is, this is the board of commissioner objectives, and obviously, town management and staff, you know, looks at our objectives as, what's important to you guys is what drives a lot of our extra stuff in addition to our basics. So yeah, this is, this is a board of commissioners' objectives, that we should be agreeing what our, our top five or ten are, and then divvy them up. Who's gonna lead what? Who's gonna be the point person on what? So that we, so we drive them through. Yeah, yeah. Okay? Can everybody get with Heather on when the next day, is it next to have this done before October or USCM?
Heather, you gonna send out a note asking?
Sure.
Okay, that being said, Mr. Mayor?
Is that a motion to adjourn?
No, we adjourn.
For a second.
Second.
All in favor of saying yes? All in favor of saying no? Good adjournment.